To call this meeting to order, please silence your electronic devices so that we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by Councilman McLeary.
Council President, please follow me in our lowest prayer followed by the pledge. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not temptation, but led us from evil. Another pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the great law of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. You may remove your mask once you get up there. Please put it on when you walk away. Start with your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Once you hear a first bell, that means you have 30 seconds left. Please wrap it up.
At the last meeting I came and I asked if there's been any money spent so far on this manager search. Nobody answered the question. I've had to file a FOIL request and that's in the works. Can somebody tell me why I have to actually FOIL a simple question on taxpayer money? Have you had to spend any money on this search so far? For what? The Batavia had a story that you're going to be doing interviews. Is there any cost associated with those interviews? A fairly easy question is taxpayer money. And as a taxpayer, I'd like to know. We were told this was going to be free. Now, I know the Council President did warn, nothing is ever really free, but again, we were told it would be free. So it's an easy question. Did you spend money or not? And if so, how much so far? Thank you very much.
That's all.
Any response? I like to hear some. Rosemary, you go first if you could. You're on committee six.
Is there a response to Mr. Roach's request? I mean, did we spend any money on this?
Unfortunately, I'm not part of the manager's search because I'm a candidate, so I couldn't answer that question.
Who's good?
John.
I'll try to address that for Mr. Roach. As you probably read in the Batavian, this week we will be going through the interview process. I did mention last meeting that there will be more to come very soon, which is what I was referring to. Didn't have all the exact times and dates at that point, but I knew it was coming up. John, I don't have that exact information. I do believe that Gino alluded to the fact that it would be very minimal cost in that the search was being provided as a second search free of charge, but that there would be probably additional small costs in advertising for the national search. I don't have those numbers with me, but after Thursday, after we've gone through the process, I'll make sure that we gather those numbers for you. I think you'll find that it was a very, very minimal cost.
Also, travel has been minimized because of the COVID. So most everything's been done via Zoom. So we didn't have to fly people around and put them up in hotel rooms.
And I do appreciate Mr. Roach's concern because they asked, in fact, it is taxpayer dollars. And we did try to keep everything to the absolute minimum that we could for this second quote-unquote "free" search. So I'll make sure that you get those numbers when the process is finalized, probably by the end of this week.
Yeah, the process should be finalized very soon and then we'll have the actual number versus piecemeal or anything.
Right, exactly.
And so on.
Okay.
Anything else?
How many people did you interview in Zoom?
You can't discuss that until the process is over, so.
You're in that process on Thursday, correct, Ro?
Pardon me?
I said you will be in that process on Thursday.
Absolutely.
You will have all those answers then.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Communications?
Just one. Franco's Food Service has committed a license application to the Jeff and Sawyer Stadium location. There was no traction from this department.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
With a name like Franco's, they will be serving spaghetti and meatballs at the stadium.
From what I understand, this is, I was told, that name is the maiden name of the owner.
It is, yes.
The one that's taken over the Muckups.
It's Robbie's wife's maiden name, yeah. So that's even better yet that she's an Italian. Now we really welcome her to Batavia.
Okay.
Okay.
The next council business meeting, there's Polish people that live here too, as well as.
And we love the Polish people. We love all the people here.
Same kind of food, different.
Yeah, that's right. The Italians know.
The next city council business meeting will be held on Monday, March 8, 2021, 7:00 PM, City Hall, Council floor, on second floor of City Center. We have a proclamation today for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Wyakowski will present that to, I believe, Representative.
I'm not really active representative, you know, ARC's been a member for many years now. And then we operate many businesses, help out a lot. I know parents who are, you know, thirty. So Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, March 2021. Whereas developmental disabilities affect more than seven million Americans and their families, and whereas public awareness and education can enhance the community's understanding of the issues affecting people with developmental disabilities, and whereas people with developmental disabilities can be vital and vibrant members of our communities involving equality of life for all of us, and whereas the month of March has been designated Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month with 100,000 members and 600 chapters of the ARC undertaking public awareness, educational, and fundraising initiatives, and whereas the ARC of the United States is the nation's leading volunteer-based organization advocating for the people with developmental disabilities and their families, and whereas the Batavia City Council proudly recognizes the achievements of the ARC of Genesee, Orleans, and supports this organization's mission of being a partner for people with disabilities and a gateway to opportunities for each person to experience their desired potential. Now, therefore, it being resolved, the Batavia City Council was hereby proclaiming, March 2021 is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Genesee County, New York, and urges the citizens of Batavia to give full support to efforts that work towards encouraging people with developmental disabilities with all productive lives of inclusion in our communities. Signed by Council President Eugene Jacobson.
Thank you. Not sure we quit a face. There's people like all around me, but um, Bob's on here, so I'll just take my mask off for a second. Did want to give a small, just short history on Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. It was actually established in 1987 by then-President Ronald Reagan to be a national recognition and a national awareness of people with developmental disabilities and their contributions, as well as how they add to our community, which really prior to that time, and still sometimes to this day, people simply don't recognize the significant contributions of people who happen to have a developmental disability in their communities. So we have had a relationship with the city of Batavia really long before 1987, and we're very happy to be continuing here in the city. Our agency has expanded up into Orleans County and will be meeting with Orleans County later this week for the same reasons. And really just want to say thank you for the support. And when you see people with developmental disability, think about the contributions that they make. They may not seem apparent to everyone, but they are significant. And again, we're one of the leading employers, actually. Four hundred and fifty employees within our two counties, and we continue to want to contribute and offer all the services we can and the support to our communities. So thank you very much for this proclamation. Thank you.
Motion to open a public hearing to adopt the budget ordinance. Mr. Beal, second in, that's Bridge. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bridge?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Wyakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Any speakers?
Yes.
Please state your name and use the podium and address before, give your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. Speakers will address the issue of the public hearing reference to the budget ordinance only and not individuals, per Robert's rules. First bell means you have 30 seconds left. Please wrap it up because I'll have to stop you on the second bell.
John.
I'd like to say again that as long as you have any public safety positions vacant, that I think it's wrong that you pay the BDC money to pay for their employee, no matter how good a job, how worthy, if it's not a city employee, and I think public safety should come first. That's just my feeling. Also, if you're going to give money to GoArt for hopefully the picnic in the park, and for any reason they don't have the picnic in the park, that you have something in the budget that says they got to give us the money back. That doesn't, didn't happen last year. It's not their fault that they couldn't run picnic in the park, but we didn't get our money back either. I'd like to see something in there this year. Thank you.
That's all that's signed up.
Council members want to weigh in?
To my knowledge, there is no money put away this year for the picnic in the park for GoArt.
That's what I kind of thought.
Yeah, it's not in the budget.
Yeah.
So there's no worry about it.
And it wasn't paid out in the current fiscal year because of COVID.
And so it was an austerity budget, so we stopped on that.
And they were informed.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a question to see if proposed budget reflect the savings with the use.
I believe so.
I put a number in the budget. There's still actually an extra, I believe, $6,000 that we could go down on the use if you were to pass it, yes.
So it doesn't.
So it fits in the budget.
It needs to be modified, then?
We can go forward as it is now, but it does fit in with the amount we have in the budget.
Anyone else? Anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wants to speak can come up and speak if they would like.
I'm looking closer here.
Second in, Mr. Beal. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wyakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bridge?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to open a public hearing in reference to water rates. Mr. Canali? Second in, Mr. Pacino. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canali?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bridge?
Yes.
Isn't there a discussion on that?
This is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Karas?
Yes.
Wyakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Is there any public comments?
No one has signed up.
Anyone like to sign up in reference, or speak in reference to the water rates? If you fail to sign up, you may do so. Just let me know. Okay, council members, questions?
Yeah, I mean, you refer to it as a fee and I refer to it as a burden on every household, every renter, every business, and every corporation.
I remember calling it a fee, but.
Well, it states right here it's a fee. Well, whoever referred to it as a fee, I refer to it as a burden for everyone.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or comments?
Is there a number on it?
Yeah, it went up 20 cents per thousand gallons.
Of Filipinos.
Well, it could add up if you use a lot of water. However, if we explain this every time this comes up, and it's good to re-explain it again, this is kind of a schedule that's been set due to capital projects for a scene in the future, I believe. Rachel, do you want to kind of go into that?
Sure, that's correct. So the water fund budget is $5 million. The fund increases 20 cents or 3.4%. The total impact to a resident is about $4.39 per quarter or $17 on the entire year. So that's an average household usage. The fee chart we use was developed several years back when I believe Jason Molina was still here with Matt Worth, and they basically take a look at all the capital projects we have coming up to maintain our infrastructure, and then back out of that to show where we need to be to maintain our systems. So when you look at what it's paying for, it's for the delivery to your home in a safe, efficient manner.
And it involves meters and maintenance and things that goes along with that. So these things create, some things that raise some cost, like cleaning out the ponds per se and various other things that has to be planned for ahead so that we're not suddenly under and then we have to come from, grab money from something else. So that's why that fee is built in as a slow increase over a large amount of years.
Yeah, well, also, you know, like you said, the infrastructure, and I think most of Batavia's all been converted over. Now they don't have to come in your house to read the meter. They can drive down the street and read the meters. We've had some major upgrades in that equipment and technical upgrades that are just great. I mean, the city doesn't have to go through the problem knocking on doors and having a separate meter reading booth. And also infrastructure improvements, as we all know, most of our, a lot of our infrastructure's prehistoric, and the costs of water lines and all that is just unbelievable today. It's just gone up so much that people couldn't even guess how much it costs. But the downside is, of course, if people try conserving, they use less water. If you use less water, the income drops.
It has to balance out. Making the water, whether you're using it or not to a pump, that's beyond my expertise. But I will also tell you that later in this meeting, we're going to be covering the water chemical bids. We're going to be covering lime sludge removal. These are all water-related things. Lead service replacement is not directly coming out of our funding, but it is related to that, and there probably might be some additional things that we have to do in lieu of, in spite of the grant, we're still going to have to do some of it. So it's constantly being upgraded. It's constantly being monitored, and fresh water is our lifeblood. We need fresh water so we can survive and drink. So this is important to keep this thing going and keep it up to snuff as best we possibly can. So that's why it raises a few cents every year or every other year. It has a built-in plan to keep things going.
I recall, and Rachel, you probably know this or don't know this bad, Jason said after five years, it wouldn't increase anymore. We've been past five years.
Anybody recall, remember saying that?
I don't remember.
I mean, it's possible. I just don't remember hearing him say that. Because I remember it being a constant plan of the future to gradually keep this within range so that we can maintain water for water. The water bill pays for all the water infrastructure that we have.
Well, I'm quite sure they have the Minnesota, they'd be able to turn on that.
I remember Matt Worth saying that if we have increases minimal per year, rather than not have an increase for one or two years, we don't have a big increase.
Right. I remember that conversation.
But he also stated at that time that this is going to be an ongoing practice. There's no way around it.
Yeah, it requires maintenance and it requires upkeep. And basically, per the charter, we are responsible for upkeeping city infrastructure as a council. It says right in there. I read that today. I was looking something else on my phone, I think, actually. And that includes all buildings, infrastructure, property owned by the city. We are bound to keep that in working condition. So this is our responsibility and it's something we have to do.
And I sympathize with Councilperson questions because it's never ending, it's so many retired people today, you know, they get an eight-dollar increase a month in their retirement, and then we say, well, it's only $6 a month, well, there's $5 a year. And they say, gee, I'm losing money again, you know?
I'm one of those people you speak of, and I suffer the same as everyone else, but it's a necessary thing to have fresh water coming out of our taps. And there's people in the country that don't have fresh water right now and they wish they did. So I guess we're lucky we have a good system and it's working so far.
And we do it for quality water, too.
All right, anything else? Motion to close?
Yeah, you have it.
And second in?
John.
John? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wyakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bridge?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Motion to open a public hearing entitled Business Improvement District Plan. Chairman? Second in, Mr. Beal. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karas?
Yes.
Wyakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bridge?
Yes.
Christian?
Okay, anyone who wants to speak in reference to the bid improvement plan, bid district plan, I mean, can come up and speak, just let me know. Any council members would like to weigh in?
Is Swan Street included in this plan? I don't believe Swan is in the bid, but I'd have to look at a map.
It might be going out of there.
I thought it was one side of it.
I thought the line went right through the middle of Swan Street incorporating, the west side is, but the east side is not. I could be wrong. I'd have to look it up.
You said the west side was, but the east side wasn't.
Right, because it puts up to the old Chafensville and all that other stuff, right? But I'm not positive. It could have, it could add. I'd have to look it up. We can find that out before the end of the meeting if you like.
The map is on the cover at page 15.
I can't, I couldn't see where.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the west end of Swan. Not inclusive of the building on the corner of school.
It doesn't go down to Main Street, correct? Or does it go down to School Street?
It goes as far as School Street and then cuts over and then goes up Liberty Street and then back around. So that little section there that you're talking about is basically Eloquent Street, Swan Street, School Street, and then back to Liberty Street, that little.
The jagged edge.
Trappazoid or whatever shape it is, it actually is. Incorporates, it gets the businesses on Eloquent Street, and then it gets the west side of Swan Street to school.
I also see that, if this is correct, I see that the corner of Swan and Eloquent Street on the south side is included in this. Correct?
Yeah, it looks like this.
This is too small to see.
It's all the businesses on Eloquent Street, both sides, from Swan West.
Both sides of Eloquent?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, it might not even be as far as School Street. It might go to just the driveway that is, goes between those two streets. I don't believe it goes all the way to school. It could, it's hard to tell by this map what that is actually, but it's very close to School Street and it is. Anyone else have any other questions?
Swan just goes to around the old sale test building.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah, so it just goes to the old railroad.
Yeah, that's what that is. That's the driveway is the old railroad. And if you notice in your packet, it shows in red, and it's basically just including the banners and the music equipment and the Christmas decorations that they spoke to us about a meeting or two ago in reference to a capital project, a small capital project that Bid wants to do, and that needs to be added into their plan because they're doing that in the next year or so.
I did some research and I talked to the bid president about it. It was a pretty big program, you know, so we got the current laws current in regards to bids and their spending, but what they want to do is the, of course, they need each new banners and the music equipment, they want to go to Wi-Fi equipment and just put speakers on Wi-Fi, hire a Comcast, broadcast music through.
Yeah, down, little speakers inside the buildings on Main Street so you can hear it as a shop or whatever.
And then, of course, the Christmas decorations, they want to replace a lot of the Christmas decorations, which is good, and hopefully they'll have the ability to put them on themselves. This is their money, it's not our money. You know, if they want to spend some of their money, that's a good thing. It's good for the community.
Yeah, they're only to do it on, or the majority of their money has to be spent on capital projects, and this is their request to do that, so.
If anyone wants to complain, that would have to, in my opinion, just be the bid number.
Yeah, this is just something that we are agreeing with their process. Anyone else? Okay, motion to close. Mr. Karas, and second in, Mr. Wyakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karas?
Yes.
Wyakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bridge?
Yes.
Christian?
Okay, anyone who wants to speak in reference to the bid improvement plan, bid district plan, I mean, can come up and speak, just let me know. Any council members would like to weigh in?
Is Swan Street included in this plan? I don't believe Swan is in the bid, but I'd have to look at a map.
It might be going out of there.
I thought it was one side of it.
I thought the line went right through the middle of Swan Street incorporating, the west side is, but the east side is not. I could be wrong. I'd have to look it up.
You said the west side was, but the east side wasn't.
Right, because it puts up to the old Chafensville and all that other stuff, right? But I'm not positive. It could have, it could add. I'd have to look it up. We can find that out before the end of the meeting if you like.
The map is on the cover at page 15.
I can't, I couldn't see where.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the west end of Swan. Not inclusive of the building on the corner of school.
It doesn't go down to Main Street, correct? Or does it go down to School Street?
It goes as far as School Street and then cuts over and then goes up Liberty Street and then back around. So that little section there that you're talking about is basically Eloquent Street, Swan Street, School Street, and then back to Liberty Street, that little.
The jagged edge.
Trappazoid or whatever shape it is, it actually is. Incorporates, it gets the businesses on Eloquent Street, and then it gets the west side of Swan Street to school.
I also see that, if this is correct, I see that the corner of Swan and Eloquent Street on the south side is included in this. Correct?
Yeah, it looks like this.
This is too small to see.
It's all the businesses on Eloquent Street, both sides, from Swan West.
Both sides of Eloquent?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, it might not even be as far as School Street. It might go to just the driveway that is, goes between those two streets. I don't believe it goes all the way to school. It could, it's hard to tell by this map what that is actually, but it's very close to School Street and it is. Anyone else have any other questions?
Swan just goes to around the old sale test building.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah, so it just goes to the old railroad.
Yeah, that's what that is. That's the driveway is the old railroad.
But we do not know what property taxes and school taxes is going to be until after the thirty first of May, which is very concerning to me because of the COVID, the fact that people haven't been working. I just don't know what people are really doing.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern and I have the city clerk run the percentage of taxes paid thus far this year, and ninety five point two seven percent of the taxes, property taxes, have been paid. So that is higher than it was at this point last year, and there's actually more coming in since we were able to make that calculation. So we're actually, this year, people are paying their property taxes.
We're ninety five percent, Heidi. Good, thank you.
Yeah, and to the financial statements, Lisa actually recommended that we, if council is interested, we could do a work session to sit down and go through the financial statements.
Definitely, because this is, what, fifteen, sixteen pages?
Right.
And I'm thinking, what the hell?
So we also monitor our cash flows as well. So we are, we are watching where things are, we know what revenue is still expected. And I don't see any issues knowing that we've taken the austerity budget approach this year. I don't see any major issues, but again, we don't know where the year ends up until the final audit is completed. So it is difficult to plan a new budget when you're not finished with the year you're in, and the year you're in has been a very difficult year.
Anything else? So are we in consensus to move the budget ordinance to the business meeting on March eighth for a final vote? Do you think it's moved? The water rates? Resolution?
Thank you, Council President. As I stated before, the water fund budget is five million dollars. The proposed water fund increase is twenty cents, or three point four percent. And the total impact to a typical residential home is seventeen dollars and fifty six cents annually.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move the water rates resolution to the business meeting for a final vote?
Yes.
Okay, then let's forward. The bid improvement plan?
Thank you, Council President. The local law number two, amending the business improvement district plan, is being amended to reflect the capital funds of the bid planned projects of, as mentioned before, downtown marketing banners, music in the streets, and Christmas decorations, to make the downtown better and more business friendly. Also, the plan updates the bid assessments to estimate a dollar eighty one cents for a thousand dollars of assessed value in what they raise in their district. There's currently no debt service to be paid for by the district assessment charge.
Any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting on March eighth? Yes?
Yes, I'm sorry, I looked totally blank, I'm sorry, yes.
So they had votes as well? And now the YMCA Youth Bureau Services is agreeing?
Thank you, Council President. After finding the direction of the city council to explore potential ways to save on youth services and our youth coordinator and director left for different roles, the city issued an RFP, a request for proposal. Three firms responded, and one was a no bid, and the YMCA came in with the best price. I asked the youth board at the time to be part of the review and selection process to rate the proposals, which we do with all RFPs that come into the city. The selection committee interviewed the YMCA. It was a very great interview, and the Y's ability to provide the service for the youth of Batavia. Attached to have the agreement for four years with the YMCA to provide after-school and summer services at no cost to residents via this contractual agreement with the city. The YMCA will utilize city parks during the summer and provide after-school services for youth. That includes things like homework help, crafts, STEM activities, recreation. I believe this is the right way to provide the residents and youth and families this service. And I think that collaborating with the YMCA, the after-school programs, has worked out very well thus far. They have been an excellent partner to us in the city. If we provide the service via city employees, roughly it would cost two hundred and forty five thousand dollars in this budget year. If we contract out, the price will be a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars with the YMCA. Currently, in your budget, the total budget for youth services is a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars for this fiscal year, and will cover the cost of contracting this out, plus our rent, plus the community garden.
Yes, I see according to your paperwork here, that's a saving of sixty nine thousand dollars the first year, but it adds up to approximately a quarter of a million dollars over a four or five year period, if you find that.
That's correct.
Any questions or concerns? Go ahead.
I have a question on page twenty five of this, of D. It says the minimum of four to five park locations will be utilized. And then it reads four parks. What happened to Woodward Field? Is that because of the football field?
I'm sorry, say that, I didn't hear the last part of your question, Patty.
What happened to Woodward Field?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, are we?
Correct, correct.
Okay, it says the parks will include Lambert, Williams, John Kennedy, and Farrell. What happened to Woodward Field? It says five parks, but it's only four.
Woodward Field, I'm sorry.
Used to be a park.
I don't know that we've provided services there before. This was writ, the RFP was written by the youth director. Not to my knowledge.
So it was part of the year?
It was part of the football, I just was curious, is that because of the football stadium?
We did that years and years ago.
Years ago.
There was a, there was a park program. We had the youth water.
I don't live in that district anymore, I was just curious.
Well, and you bring up a good question, because I was going to ask a question. What parks do we provide services for now in lieu of, before COVID? Where were the parks that we were providing?
Lambert, Williams, John Kennedy School and Farrell were where we were providing services.
So Kivvy and MacArthur weren't on it, are they, they weren't there?
I would have to look into if Kivvy was there or not, that could have been the fifth park. Is Kivvy's a really small park?
Lion? No?
We'd have to think.
Kivvy's, Kivvy and MacArthur are pretty good size.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, and before the director left, she helped write this RFP. These are the parks where services were currently being provided.
And it does say four or five, and it only does four, so. And so there was a confusion on my part, where I wrote some notes down in reference to. If we could, you know, get that maybe cleared up and get answers to what parks we were providing for the last time we did it, which was pre-COVID. And then that should be the same, I would think, for this, this agreement.
I think these four parks, Gene, are the parks that were the last ones that we offered summer park services to. I believe that Kivvy and MacArthur had been eliminated quite a few years ago. And not, not a long time ago, but I'm going to say probably within the last eight to ten years. I think MacArthur and Kivvy had been eliminated just to reduce the programs that they're offering, so.
Yeah, I mean, this gets brought up now, and this is like new questions to ask because, you know, I didn't know, I didn't know. I knew we were providing it one time to all of them, but I knew that we had cut out and I had lost track as to. Which one we were giving it to and how that was to try to regionalize it across the city, I understand that.
So I have a clarification from Ray Court of D W. These four are the only four we have been providing services for. So we could amend that to say four parks.
Oh, thank you.
So it'll stay the same? And the people of the community will know these are the same four parks that they're.
Basically, you have two on the north side of town and two on the south side, basically. One in each corner, basically.
Makes sense.
I have a correction. It says at number seven on twenty eight, it's security cameras. The city will provide access to security cameras to the YMCA staff members upon request. Aren't they going to be there anyways? The security cameras?
The security cameras are there, the YMCA already has access to those cameras. We just wanted to ensure that it was in the agreement.
Okay.
So then we could look back if I wasn't here or members from the Y weren't here and say, oh, yeah, here it is in the agreement, you can have access to those cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Beth?
Yeah, I have about six or seven questions. Number one, Rachel, and the city provided service, the numbers up at the top, are those budgeted, derived from the budget or derived from actual costs?
On the memo?
On the one right in here, yes.
Yeah, they're derived from, the first year is the budget.
Okay, so the costs were lower, I think. I remember that, I don't, I think the costs were, there were some people left and payroll went down.
Well, twenty twenty one, we would have, would have had very minimal costs. So the first year, two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars was what was budgeted to provide those services, yes. It's not the actual cost, twenty twenty one, we didn't provide youth services after March.
Okay, so this is just budgeted numbers. I mean, it could have been lower because we didn't have the employees. You know, over the last few years before that, we had several employees lose.
If we were fully staffed and utilized all the funds we expected to, this is how much we expected it to cost.
And then the other question is, you know, under the city program, there are a lot of nice to do things. Don't get me wrong, I'm all for saving fifty, sixty thousand dollars, especially at times like this. But is there any flexibility? Because they used to have programs at A R C at Woodrow Road, Friday night at the middle school, the end of the summer carnival they had for the children and the parents. Is there any flexibility that these things can continue on or?
Well, it's, what was the first one, a nighttime program?
Well, they used to, I know they used to mix with residents at the nursing homes. They used to, children go there and have bingo and crafts and different things.
I think the Y, and I don't want to speak for them, maybe it's a good time, if you wouldn't mind, council member, to ask if they could say if they would provide those. But I do want to say that they were very interested in beyond the agreement, having other services to bring children swimming at the pool, kayaking at the park, and taking field trips. So that would be encompassed in those. Rob or Jeff, if you'd like to introduce yourself and the members here, if you'd like to say, you know, what services you believe you, you can provide at this point? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Hi, I'm Jeff Dunson from the YMCA. Just to piggyback on Rachel's response there, yes, it would be our full intention to incorporate all of our YMCA services into this new relationship with the city, including swimming at the Y, which Jocelyn and her team had incorporated a couple of years back. At our Liberty Center Gymnastics Center, we could incorporate gymnastics. At the Liberty Center site that we're currently partnering with the city on for school year team programming, we could use that site for summer programming as well, so the parks could travel throughout the community and participate in some of our other area locations, as well as traditional field trips, walking and busing. That's already in the RFP plan. So I think that our plan is pretty robust in covering and ensuring that no less services will be provided and probably more services in fact.
Yeah, just so much surprises, some parents all of a sudden in August say, hey, we used to do this and now it's not being done.
Yeah, we're very aware of that.
Okay, good.
And I think you're very responsive to the needs of parents. I'm a parent in the community, obviously, I have young children who attend all different types of programs throughout our city. And if there's something I want the Y to provide, just ask them. And a lot of times, when they ask, we can or no, we can't. So the open dialogue is critical to that.
And wasn't some of those things partnerships, like the National Night Out type thing and stuff like that? Maybe they partnered with them, it wasn't necessarily the youth bureau or, you know, running it.
Correct.
It was they partnered with them to bring them in. And there was an event over there before COVID where I watched Sean get dumped in a wet tank there when people were throwing stuff like this. Whatever, that, what was that event? Was that like a National Night Out type thing?
National Night Out.
So that was all partnership? So I would think if those needs arise, I would hope you guys would be interested in partnering with that and providing.
In the original RFP, there was a request from the youth bureau to continue to be partners in all of those activities. So it is our intention to continue that relationship, absolutely.
Okay.
And also, I don't want to go ahead, is are you going to continue to apply for grants specific to these programs in the name of the city?
Yes, sir, absolutely, yeah.
And I think the youth board is very interested in helping in looking for grants and also helping to write those as well. So we see this as a stronger partnership of a bigger team.
Go ahead, Rose.
Jeff, I know that you were at the Liberty Center before the YMCA had this, on different occasions, right? That's good, are you going to be at the Liberty Center now totally or at the Y?
Me personally?
Yes.
I, I mean, I'll be over there at times, but I won't be permanently over there, no.
Okay, and is this, I noticed that you don't have any funds from the county, okay, on this?
That's right.
So is it just for city youth or are kids from outside the city coming in and using it? How are you going to handle this situation? Or can?
Can I answer that one?
Sure.
Yeah, so we actually get a payment, and Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, from the town of Batavia, because it is the school district that is served, but the town covers partial costs into the city to, to help us to serve town residents who go to the city school and want to come to that program.
I don't mind if a child comes from Pembroke or East Corvusview or East Bethany or any places like that, okay? But I think the county should contribute money for this program for the kids in the, in the whole county. Otherwise, it's really disgusting that they don't, okay? So please, see what you can do with that or.
Doesn't each town, doesn't each town have their own little parks program?
Typically, yeah.
Well, they don't have a parks program like what they're going to provide. They have computers, they have everything, the kids are going to be inside, there's going to be adults to supervise them. They don't have things they're going to have.
How do we know what county he has?
How do I what?
Do you know what county he has?
No, I know what Corvusview has and I know what East Bethany has because I have families in this area. Plus Virgin, and they're all in the county. So this is what I'm telling you.
This is, that's a separate topic in a sense.
No, I realize that.
For us to police that or the city manager to be aware of that, if suddenly there's an influx of a large amount of kids from outside the county taking advantage of our wonderful program, then we can address it then. But right now, we're talking about the contract with the Y.
That's fine, I just thought it was a good question, I mean, what's the difference? It's a good question. And somebody should be able to answer it.
Have we had a problem in the past with this?
So to the best of my knowledge, and yeah, it absolutely is something we can talk about, is the after-school program is specifically with Batavia City School District. And now there's town residents that go there, and so they are absolutely allowed to go to the after-school programming at any point, correct me if I'm wrong here. Our summer parks program, to my knowledge, you have to be a city or town resident to attend and you are checked in as well.
If you go to St. Joe's in Notre Dame either.
That's the question, yeah. So, thank you for your question.
Anything else? Yeah, just to be clear, are the lists still going to say that you can use the program?
Correct.
Or just contract them?
That's correct, we're contracting the services.
Then I have one question for the city attorney. George, do we have to amend our lease with the Liberty Center or is there, do we have to amend anything in the lease?
We've got an existing lease, we're in discussions with the city church focuses to whether or not there's a lease amendment, but right now there is an existing lease.
Okay, so we're discussing amending it, as I was just saying, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's not any more discussions relative to the lease and the operations.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I heard the YMCA is dying to build a brand new outdoor city pool like we used to have when I was growing up. Could be just, I don't know.
Actually, John, you bring up a good point. Because personally, I'm really excited about this partnership because they're a local organization. I have, I was teasing him earlier, I have my membership card from nineteen seventy one that I found during COVID cleanup. So I was a member as a teenager myself. And so, and not to mention, they're building a large, brand new facility right in the middle of our downtown, so they're investing here. So that partnership, this is like a win-win for all of us, including the most important people. And it's on my list for this whole project, is the children themselves, our future, so they can have a place to go. Like I had a place at the Y to go, and they have a place to go get their homework done. So I see people in the child business as the best people to turn this off to.
We're talking about a year-round availability to our local kids. And when you and I grew up, I remember distinctly hanging out at the Y when it was the old building and we used to just go there and hang out after school or on Saturday, shoot pool. They used to have like three pool tables downstairs.
I got Joe Robinson sitting here right on the group with it, and I was there.
That's right.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, exactly, that was the thing, in the summertime and the wintertime after school, we stayed out of trouble. So I think it's important we maintain this. We have a nice facility over there, it's large enough, the gymnastics might be a nice addition, there's a bunch of possibilities here. So I think that this is a great partnership and I'm looking forward to it. Of course, we will keep close eye on it to make sure that the contract is being met, of course.
That's great, so do we have, present, we have any other contracts with the Y?
The current contract with the Y is for augment. The current contract with the Y is for amended services at the Liberty Center for the youth. It's an MOU, member in a understanding. But any other paid agreements, not that I know of.
Any other problems with that?
No, not at all, actually. That, we use pieces of that agreement to put into this. This will supersede that agreement, so they will keep all staffing levels that are needed to run that program.
Okay, so then the MOU will be terminated.
I don't know if we'll terminate it, or let that ride out till the end of the term, because it.
Give it to George. Thank you.
So anyone else, anything else? Okay, so are we in consensus to move this resolution to the business meeting for an official vote?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that was correct. Annual resolutions, these are end-of-the-year type things, right, Rachel? These are housekeeping things that we do every year around this time. Rach will go through them.
Thank you, Council President. First, the strategic plan. You may have noticed in your budget finders and in my packet, it looks a little different. I tried to modify it to make it more visually friendly. Rosemary's saying no as I look at her. I tried to do it so you could visually see, as projects move forward, what their timeframe is, what the priority level is. And then when they're complete, they'd have an orange line through them, so council can monitor the progress of the projects we're working on. So many of these, in fact, almost all of them, are what you've seen before. They're just represented, I hope, in a more friendly manner visually. There are a few additions to the plan I want to highlight. The police station, the implementation of the Dear Management Plan, the Police Department Community Survey, which we actually can put orange lines through, because we completed that. Also, recommendations of elevating roles of residents and improving neighborhoods, creating comprehensive housing strategy for the city are things I added. And when we have a city manager team, I think these are things that need to be worked on. So again, just a little bit different look. I hope it's a little more, it's a little easier to read than former documents, a really long word document. And again, this is the RFP's management, the city manager management team on some of the priorities to move forward with for the end.
Any questions on that? So it gives you a kind of a timeline chart of what's being worked on, when it can be worked on, when we're not in the middle of a pandemic and other things are taking priority. But this is business as usual. Hopefully, we can get back to that starting next budget year or sooner, and get some kind of pattern, and get some of these projects done. So, thank you, Rachel, for that. The next one is the capital projects.
Yep, you see this resolution every year. These are ongoing capital projects listed in the resolution, as well as new projects. New ones include Richmond Harvester Road or Street Project, the Jackson Square Capital Project, the LED NIPA Streetlight Conversion, the Police Station Project, replacement of LED service water lines, the Richmond Ave Water Main Abandonment Project, the Cohocton Waterline Project, the City Mall Route Two Project, which is the section by Dan's Tire, which we talked about during budget discussions, and the City Center D R I Project. So by making these capital projects, we then can create them in our software system and move forward with implementing the projects.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to make the comment, the LED project recently, one of our neighboring communities has just started theirs, and they're excited about it, because now, if your lights are out, we just call City Hall, say, hey, the light's out in front of my house, or at the intersection, they have to respond for now the power company. I think they're turning around, they say thirty days, and I think it's closer to like when there's ten lights out. We'll wait for more to burn out, and then we'll show up.
And there was a lot out, which I didn't have, and I haven't seen any of the ones that we kind of reported.
I had a light out on my street, and I talked to Jimmy Ficarel, and National Grid was here the next day. So they are pretty good.
It's changed, it's changed, believe me.
Yeah, they're.
At the last meeting, but Ray, do you have an update on some of the progress they've made? Because we do have an extensive list we put into National Grid.
I have no update from National Grid, but I know that some of our lights that were out, our crews have been out working on those, as the weather permits also.
Yeah, those are the ones we own.
Yeah, we can work on the ones we own, we can't work on National Grids, which is mostly residential neighborhoods, so.
Yeah, at the last meeting, Ray and I were out discussing it, and the light right here went out. And the other one over there went out.
And then it came back.
Yeah, it's been really, I think it's the weird, this is the time of year that happens anyway, the cold weather kind of raises the habit. They, you know, I'm getting complaints, and people are losing their patience. It's been at least a month, maybe going on two now, so.
We'll follow up again.
Yeah, we do know, but that would be helpful.
The LEDs.
Any other capital projects, Rachel, or you?
I have another question.
Oh, who? I just have a question, when you're done with that, but you can go back and appoint members to city committees, which you could get.
But it's too late. We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we haven't.
We're still going through the list of annual resolutions.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So I mean, we're going to be next if your employee accrued liability reserves. So we're talking the investment policy now?
Yep, there's no changes to the investment policy, but I'll remind council that we did have a change approved December fourteenth, twenty twenty, that allows the city manager, in consultation with the Deputy Director of Finance and the City Clerk, to make investments in qualified institutions, so we can do so in a timely manner and capture good interest rates in this terrible investing climate. Otherwise, there's, that changes in here, there's no other changes to the policy.
Any questions about this today? Okay, and the next one would be the manual on purchasing managers?
Yep, so every year, the purchasing manual is approved. The only changes to it are Appendix D, which is here for you to review. It's an update of the individuals responsible for purchasing within the city.
Any questions on purchasing? Or the parking permits?
The parking permits is an annual resolution to commit the fees the city receives from parking permits and dumpster fees, to the tune of four hundred, four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to parking lot reserves. And I'd request that we do so this year as well.
Any questions or concerns on that? And the last one, the liability reserves?
Again, a resolution you see every year. The city has established Employee Benefit accrued Liability Reserve Fund for paying accrued liabilities due to employees who retire. You have the resolution before you to make these payouts. And currently, we have two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in reserves in that fund.
So that would be like unused time, and various things like that, that's different parts of different property obligations. So that's what that liability reserve is for?
That's correct.
Any questions on that? Okay, that long list, A through F, are we all in consensus to move all of those annual resolutions to the business meeting for a final vote?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved over. Members to various committees and boards? Good.
I moved to appoint members to various cities, committees, and boards, yeah.
So that would be James Chamberlain?
That's Sue Chitty.
To the Community Garden?
Yes.
And their city residents?
Yes, they are.
What were their names? What'd you say? Sue Chitty, that's right.
Are these reappointments, or have they already served?
Sue is. I'm not sure of James.
I think both are new.
I think they are, I know Sue is.
But they've used the garden for several years, and decided to become involved.
Yeah, they've both been involved with the square of time, and I don't know if she's been on the board.
Yes.
Just a question, did you contact the people, did you talk to them, or call them, or anything at that time?
A lot of them I know. So I do chat with them, but I don't necessarily call all the other ones. We do check to make sure that they're, they live in Batavia.
So you're firm, but there's still a lot to be addressed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And a question. Okay, are we in consensus to move that resolution to the business meeting for a final vote?
Yes.
Okay, it's moved. Capital projects close out?
Another resolution we see annually, the capital project closeout resolution will close out the following projects, the TAP Healthy Schools Sidewalk Project, the Redfield Pillars Project, the Union Street Water Main Project, the Brooklyn Avenue Water Project, Submain Water Project, and the Franklin Street Project. With regard to the TAP Healthy Schools Sidewalk Project, there's a residual balance of thirty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred to the sidewalk reserves, that actually assisted in funding projects completed this year in Ray O'Truckman, Myron, Morris, Bruce, Roosevelt, and Franklin. That was the ones we completed this summer, this past summer. And we knew there would be this residual balance, so we were able to do those sidewalks.
Any other questions?
Did all these projects, were they always awarded, or were there any cost overruns on any of them?
I don't remember anything coming to council as a cost overrun. So I believe they were as awarded, and then the TAP one was under budget. If I find out anything different, I'll shoot you guys an email.
Is there additional money for the sidewalk reserve?
Correct.
Any questions or other concerns? So are we in consensus to move those capital projects to the business meeting for a final vote? On our case? It's moved. The inter municipal agreement with Genesee County and City Bureau Operations?
Seeing that council seems favorably inclined to contract services with the YMCA, I would request that we terminate the Genesee County and City of Batavia Youth Recreation and Youth Services Program Agreement with the county. Since 2011, the city and the county have been operating with a shared director of youth through a contract. As the city continues to explore the services with the YMCA, we will no longer need the services of the county in that director's position.
And that expires at the end of this year, right?
Yes, it does.
But at this point, we're not going to need them, so we can save, what was the approximate savings?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars.
Yeah, so that's, obviously, we'll be going in a different direction if we want to need their assistance at this point.
Correct.
Any questions or concerns about that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that resolution to dissolve that contract to the business meeting for emergency?
And that will follow department vote?
Right, yeah, then you make a good point. If for some reason we decide not to go in the direction of the Y, then we would not, we kind of need that then. But I would think that saving a quarter million dollars over a five-year period of time is, and getting the same services is a really good incentive.
I'm just saying, you know, put it in the proper order, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's why it was after, that's why it was here, where it was, because we would have had to discuss that if we had made the decision earlier to move that forward. So that, we're moving that one forward to the business meeting. Furland Management?
Yeah, before you have an agreement with Furland Management for operations at the Batavia Ice Break, as everyone's aware, the COVID-19 and substantial shutdown of the rink operations, sports, and hockey during the 2021 season affected the ability of Furland Management to raise the expected revenue. And after discussions with myself and with the city attorney, we have been working with Furland over the past four months, actually. We'd like to offer a amended payment schedule as presented, and also extend the agreement for two more years. They still would like to operate here. And I'll explain what the amendment is, and before I do, I received a really nice email from Bob Gray. And he said, on behalf of the Friends of the Rink, he thanked us for conducting lease negotiations with Furland, and the city's continued focus on items needed at the rink. So the terms of the agreement are originally, they would have paid twenty-five thousand dollars in a lease payment, and thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand dollars in a capital payment due to us on March first. Under the amended terms, they would pay the same lease payment of twenty-five thousand dollars, but we will defer the payment to January one, 2022, and we'll reduce the capital contribution to five thousand dollars. That'll still be due on March first, 2021. The following two years of the contract, they will pay us twenty thousand dollars in lease payments and still make a contribution to our capital fund of five thousand dollars each year. So this will certainly help them with their cash flows and profit and loss.
I have a few after the year that happened, the meeting closed.
Very difficult.
My son plays Notre Dame High School, and I'm there every morning at six o'clock, and that place is the best it's ever looked. There is a guy there every morning mopping the floor, an older fellow. I mean, I haven't gone to locker rooms, so you have to get dressed in lobby.
Yeah.
But from the lobby, the door, front door, and walking around the rink, it's, it looks great. They're doing a good job.
That's good to hear. There's two projects in the budget as we went over, the front doors need replacement, they are pretty bad. It went over, I've toured it twice in the last six months, and then there's work in the locker rooms that'll also be done this year. I heard while I was visiting there, and I'm not an ice skater or a hockey player, that we have the fastest ice between Buffalo and Rochester, and we actually have speed skaters to come out onto that ice out of Buffalo to practice there. Because it's laid so thin, I guess it's faster. But anyone that plays hockey or skates would know a lot more about fast ice than I do.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm just a speed skater.
He's a speed skater.
I used to skate a lot when I was young. Do you know who Skates Pickers?
I was just going to say, you took the word, right?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Hey, at least I didn't have to hang around the Y. You were a cool kid, you know, you could ice skate.
Hey, I was making money.
Do you know, have they applied for any PPI loans, or any of the New York grants?
They have, they have. Their operations are part of a larger corporation, so they can't specifically target the New York facility with PPP. But they have definitely applied for that, and they have been able to keep their staff members there throughout the duration of COVID.
And in the Appendix D, there's quite a listing of events to be held there, there's no dates or anything. Some of these events, I don't remember them having been there in several years.
Page seven.
It's on Appendix D, page seventy-two?
Seventy-two. So I know that at one time, the last time this was renegotiated, Jason added more events, because we'd like to see more done with the facility. And then I added, the home show has since happened there. I'd like to see if I could do the New York soccer back, so we'll take a commitment from the manager's office with Furland to try to get these things going in the programming time during the summer.
I will tell you, a little over a year ago, I stopped in on a visit, and I was pretty disappointed. First of all, building required, and the builder was employed seven buildings, all boys and girls. After about half an hour, no man showed up, and he said, manager. It was free skate time, apparently, so anybody can come in to skate. And some adult hockey players had ropes strung across the ice with a tire up in the middle of the ice, and they were pretty aggressively practicing. And I said, well, there seems to be a management problem, you know what I mean? No, if anyone come in, they wouldn't dare get out there and skate, because they certainly would be the victim of an ice maker that got out.
Yeah, and if that ever happens, just call.
And the other thing is, what are we doing about naming rights? I mean, I think we're losing the source of bank from.
We are, we haven't had naming rights for several years. I did ask that the Floetti's name be taken down after calling Mr. Floetti. He wasn't interested in renewing his sponsorship. So it's just, it's an RFP that we'll need to put up.
Yeah, I think we need to move on that, because I mean, it's a source that may come from the city and, let's face it.
Did you ever talk to Mr. Bianco off at Notre Dame?
I did not. I was, I started to write the RFP, and things came up, so I haven't had it, actually.
I think he's interested, so if you want to give him a jingle.
And I've had a few other people, that's why we definitely need to put it out for an RFP. And see if someone wants to sponsor the rink, and put their name on it. And then I think we'd want to contribute, so we sponsor the capital fund as well, to make further improvements for the rink.
Thank you.
Rachel, how much are we paying for the company to take care of the ice making system a year? How much are we paying for that? That's on page sixty-two. Second paragraph.
We contract with a qualified company, and I'm going to ask Ray to correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we bill that cost back to Furland.
So?
So we may want to get back to you on that, but I don't, I don't think it's a large cost. I think it's, it's pretty minimal, in like, maybe twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars annually. But I'm pretty sure that's billed back. But I'll make a note to get back to everyone in council on that.
Yeah, I would hear that, that you're in, possibly just give them a year. I understand the locker rooms in some of the facilities were never painted, but yet, they had found.
had volunteers one year that were talking about the ice.
There was a group of them, Paul, do you remember them?
Yes.
And they were the painters, and do different things for the locker rooms.
Friends of the ice rink or something.
Did they do it?
I don't know.
Locker rooms are recently just painted, the last time I was in there, but they're locker rooms, I mean, they're.
I realize that, they're, they smell.
They smell like hockey people.
They smell like hockey bags, yeah.
That was a while ago, they didn't do that, they have since been repainted, since that that occurred.
Okay, this contract for the ice making machine is very interesting to me, so I'd love to know that, that from me.
By ice making machine, you mean the Z, the only machine that?
No, ice making machine that takes care of the ice.
Infrastructure that, it keeps it cold.
Yes, contract, because we have a contract on it, and I didn't realize it, if that thing ever breaks, we're in big trouble, okay? But I want to know how much is the contract, I mean, if we're reducing the, the lease, and we're paying for the other, you know, it doesn't make sense.
Well, we're not really reducing the lease, well, we're, they're paying the same amount, right?
Only for this year, or is it?
It's just delayed.
You're deferring the lease payment that would have been due in March, based on the COVID shutdowns that affected all hockey rinks, as Councilman Bealy and I are well aware, because we don't see each other at the rinks anymore. Deferring it and then basically reducing the capital contribution and out years by virtue of what's already in the capital account, so that gives them a little bit more flexibility, as Council President indicated, to get the operations back to a normal level of, of service and a normal level of programming.
Well, I heard it's really doing well, I mean, I heard Gaha's back, I heard adult leagues are back.
Well, it's back, but they're trying to lump a lot of games in a short amount of time, so when you play in October, you're trying to get everything in February and March, that's why they're deferring the payment, because they need to get the money, you know?
Yeah, they've been closed for over a year, so.
I see that.
So they'd be using all that money they would have earned throughout that year to pay in March, and it's, March is coming up, and they've been closed. So we're just deferring the March payment till the first of next year, then there will be a March payment that year as well. So instead of one payment this year, they're gonna make two payments next year.
For example, Notre Dame.
And it'll be the same amount, but only the capital part will be reduced dramatically for the two years, and that'll give them two years, one year to get back on their feet, one year to assess, and then we'll be back talking to them about an extension or whatever we need to do after that, it's only a two-year agreement. So that gives them time to get ahead, and we can watch what's going on over there.
Was the ice rink actually closed, or was it just people weren't using it?
I don't know, I didn't recall any major fundraisers.
You couldn't play hockey until February 1?
No, was the rink closed, or was it just?
They allowed practices.
You could basically have practices, but they were skill-based practices, which precluded games, so all the normal programming, the Gaha, that some of the other organizations would do by way of tournaments could not be held in New York State.
Was the community still allowed to use the rink?
No, there's no open skate, there's just practices, the bare minimum, bare bones.
Yeah, I mean, this, this COVID is, during the COVID was bad enough, but then there's this delay now, because there's a year of no income from some of these things, and now that has to catch up, and you can't do it all in two months, so, I mean, we're trying to be reasonable and keep it open, and I, you know, I look this over extensively, too. I mean, the capital improvements are, you know, a big thing, but there is some money in reserves that we can hold a year or two, just like we're doing with our own budget, we can get by a year, maybe two, but then it can, it can sustain itself for a very long period of time, it's gotta be just a temporary thing to get people on their feet. Any other questions or concerns on that?
Just a note for council, Ferland also has significant experience with capital planning for rinks, developmental rinks, renovation rinks, actually assisted with Buffalo Sabres with development of their practice facility, so in talking to Ferland, the city manager, they indicated that they would be happy to and look forward to assisting with general capital planning discussions for the facilities that moves forward, because that's actually noted in the release as well. It's just a matter of having the resources to be able to make for that, because the city's got so many projects going.
Right, right.
They run Lockport, too, don't they?
They did, I believe they, they stepped away from that, and Lockport's now contracted directly through town.
That's a nice rink.
Any other questions or concerns? So are we in agreement to move that to the business meeting for a final vote? Okay, water chemical bids?
Thank you, Councilwoman, the water chemical bids were issued on January 20th for chemicals to be used at the water and wastewater treatment plant, or used in various aspects of the treatment project process, the bids are listed in the memo, and I recommend awarding these contracts as presented to preserve the precedent.
I see the list of companies and various bid numbers written on the list. Anyone have any questions in reference to that?
Great.
Go ahead.
Didn't we have bids at one time from the chemical company over here at the Frost Street?
Actually, may, may have, I don't have any historic on that, we actually had more chemical bidders this year than in a long period of time, we do not have the entire bid to have with you in a long time. Along that line, some bids are up, some are down. We had two new bidders added, added in this list, excuse me, this year, PBS Technologies and Pond replace two previous bidders, they ended up being a little bit.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah.
Ray, did any of them go up significantly, or were they just minor increases?
Three, yeah, 4% was the highest up, with a 17% drop was the most significant down.
Thank you. Any other questions? So are we in consensus to move the water chemical bids to the business meeting for a final vote? It's moved. Ice floods removed?
Yes, they, unfortunately, there was no ice flood bids received after advertising, so the DPW will seek to reissue the bids, however, I recommend that council move this to a future business meeting, so after the bids are reached, they could vote on it at a business meeting.
Therefore, the reason there's, the names are Xed out, because we don't know who the voters are, so, any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to a future, not necessarily March 8, but future meeting, so we can redo the bid process and get a name in there that we can add to it?
About to bid again, and we don't get any bids.
We'll get some more.
I'm just wondering why we didn't receive bids the first time?
What do you think, Ray?
If nobody out there wants to remove floods, or?
Don't know, just, previous bidders that had bid on in the past, didn't elect the time to bid on it, so we will put it out again and, and see if there's any interest.
And where, where are they disposing?
Normally, if you just did the agricultural industry, so it's usually farmers who are looking for it, to sweeten their fields.
How big is the garden? Okay, and if worse comes to worse situations, you can haul it?
There would be, become costly if it was to go ahead and, so.
Do you stockpile it?
Uh, we, we, we try, that's one of the things that they do by, this contract, is trying and being able to haul it, so it can be, like, a lot. Well, let's cross that bridge.
When was the last time that you did this?
We have to.
So. Yeah, it could have been COVID-related, with employees not being able to work, and there is things, and they just didn't feel confident bidding, and they weren't sure they could, you know, just, you know, making assumptions here, but there's been a lot of odd things that have happened this year, in reference to COVID, or they can't come because of COVID, now, they're already scheduled out, I don't know.
I was just curious as to, did we do something, you know, as a city, to discourage people to bid, I mean, sometimes municipalities do something.
Well, sometimes it happened, it happened with the law, if I recall correctly, and that, the grades came down, it was a, a point in time when there was a lot of wind damage or something, and everyone was tied up, so this could be just a matter of rebidding it, and if it doesn't the second or third time, then I think that would raise some kind of alarm.
They may be, they may very well be very backlogged, and that's why they didn't do this.
Yeah, we can find out if we need to, but hopefully, we can get through it a second time, and then we'll get, we'll get it done. Any other questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting, as to be determined when they can get that process complete, that moves forward? Lead services replacement?
So that's item on the agenda. In May of last year, the city authorized an agreement with the New York State Department of Health for the replacement of lead water services. The focus of the work is South Swan, Otis, and Hutchins Street, there'll be about 50 to 75 services that are able to be replaced. The engineering and design for the project has been completed, and the construction bids were advertised in February. The bids will be opened on March 3, 2021, and council will be advised of the lowest responsive responsible bidder prior to March 8 board meeting. I recommend the resolution is advanced to the March 8 board meeting, and the bidder's name and price is amended on the resolution for final approval.
Any questions? I have one, is this a typo thing? And I want to think it was removed, and that's why it shouldn't be there, but on your page, you talk about three streets, on the resolution, it names two streets, and then it says "and", and then it's "plus," so I think one of those streets was removed, I want to think Matt said they were trying to concentrate the services, or maybe it is three streets and it's.
Actually, I think we started to roll over to other streets, to identify 45 definite lead services, and we're gonna, so we can continue to look for the additional ones in that area as this contract goes down, so. We're hopeful we can get up to about 70 services done with this, but.
I'm just saying, for a resolution.
We're actually in better shape lead service-wise than we thought.
The resolution says portions of Swan and Hutchins Street and, and it's planned, so if we're gonna fill that in when we know who the bid is and all that, we can.
It looks like we probably, we left out almost on that one, so.
I didn't know it was intentional, I thought Matt said something about, he found a street with a lot of, in a row, so it was easier and more efficient to just go down the street than hopping around the street to street, but I, it was more of a typo question, I mean, it doesn't matter, I just thought.
Well, yeah, I reckon.
Yeah, we gotta fill that, we gotta put a name in there, so that's why you'll see the X's in there, process is still ongoing, expected to be done.
But we accept.
No, I'm not worried about my street.
Wait, but we accepted, we accepted a grant to also do Otis Street, that's what's.
I don't know, I mean.
That's what's here, we accepted a grant to do South Swan, Otis, and Hutchins, and the end, so.
I just see why they're doing Otis, Williams needs more than Otis.
It doesn't matter, I'm just trying to make sure the typographical errors are corrected on there, and I knew I was gonna get beef about being Otis Street, I was hoping it was Hutchins Street that wasn't listed in there, but it wasn't.
Maybe we lost our honor.
My house is one of the newest houses on the streets. Anyway, any questions on that? That's a good project to start getting some of these lead lines out of our system, and if this grant up pays for 45 or 70 houses to get done, that's a big thing for those people who are lucky enough to get that done, that's great, so. Any, any questions on that? So we're in consensus to move that, I believe that one is going to the March 8, correct?
That's correct.
It should be ready by then, if it's not, we'll address that a moment to a future, but I think we should be able to get that done. All right, any other questions or anything about what we've done? Go ahead.
No, it's just, thank you very much for sending emails out, just concerning the COVID and vaccinations, and, and, oh, you guys, you can't get it in on it, you know, they're always full, apparently, yes, and it's just, I want to thank you for doing that.
You're welcome, and if there's any information, and you personally, you know, you can call, call me up, thanks.
I have a suggestion, Paul Smur, check about one minute after midnight, check all the sites.
One minute after midnight, you take them to stay up, I already have.
Since you're alarmed, you want the shot or not?
I don't want it.
Theresa, I, I have a friend that, we were, my wife and I were watching the Daytona 500, and then get the text real early, and then I looked at my phone, and I said, gee, I just got a text from Larry, he lives south of Buffalo, and he's been helping a lot of us out, and he says, hey, check the Dome Arena, they just posted some va, some available appointments, I went there, they must have 50 time slots available, so I started going through them, bang, I got a slot right there, and he said that he's been watching this, and, because he's taking his wife and his mother to get their shots, and he said they've been coming out like at 11, 12 at night.
Wow.
So, it's just a suggestion, and it's helpful to somebody.
Yeah, I have my share, yeah.
All right, so if you will take us into executive session?
Certainly, whereas Article 7, Section 105, 18 of Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity was substantially affected value thereof. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive sessions.
Can we buy, Mr. Bealy, call the role, please?
Councilwoman Costino?
Yes.
Connelly?
Yes.
Guinness?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Biakowski?